We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Purdy City Council to order. Welcome Joe Deacon and his listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rickenbach.
Here.
And Councilmember Ruckregal.
Present.
You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Couple items before we pledge. First is regarding electronic attendance. In accordance with Governor JB Pritzker's Executive Order 2020-43, which continues to limit any gatherings of more than 50 people, and Executive 2020-44, requiring the provision of video, audio, or telephonic access to meetings. In the CDC recommending social distancing of at least six feet between persons. City Hall is implementing changes and restrictions for the city council meeting on July 28, 2020, while complying with the Open Meetings Act. The council meeting will be conducted in person with members of the council present in council chambers with plexiglass barriers, with department heads in their offices, and some city staff in Room 404 with the ability to remotely answer questions while maintaining a six-foot distance. Fifteen members of the public and one member of the media will be present inside council chambers. Temperature screenings are required upon entry to City Hall and face coverings are required while inside. Members of the public and media are invited to watch through the livestream, YouTube, Television Channel 22, or through WCBU Radio. Submissions for public comment were received through the city clerk's office. The agenda, minutes, and video podcast of the meeting will be available online through the city website. I'd also like the council to note that Corporation Counsel Chrissy Peterson is participating through the phone and available. And we also have Attorney Mas Patel here in person. So we have double duty from the legal department tonight. Before we rise for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, I'd ask for us to reflect on some prominent leaders who passed this week, this past week. First of all is Rudolph "Rudy" Booth, who is the father of Coach Derek Booth. And we want to extend our heartfelt condolences to the Booth family in the passing of Mr. Booth, who has been a longtime leader in our community and very supportive. Also, we'd like to pay tribute and recognize the passing of Congressman John Lewis. Congressman Lewis was born to sharecroppers, and he was among the original Freedom Riders, was beaten by Alabama State Troopers, and an icon of the Civil Rights Movement. One of the most well-known quotes attributed to Congressman Lewis was during a commencement address that he gave in Atlanta, when he said, "You must find a way to get in the way. You must find a way to get in trouble. Good trouble, necessary trouble. Use what you have to help make our country and make our world a better place, where no one will be left out or left behind. It is your time." Congressman Lewis was awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom and was 80 years old when he passed. The second leader that we lost was Reverend C.T. Vivian, who is a key advisor to Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. and spent many years advocating for justice and equality. Reverend Vivian organized sit-ins against segregation right here in Peoria in the 1940s, more than 10 years before similar protests made national news. Reverend Vivian was also pivotal in organizing the Free... He studied theology alongside Congressman Lewis at the American Baptist College in Nashville, Tennessee. Reverend Tyndell was also received the Presidential Medal of Honor. And Reverend Cordy Tyndell Vivian was 95 years old when he passed. We keep them and the importance of their message in our thoughts and prayers. With that, I'd like to invite everyone to join us for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Join us to the flag of the United States of America and to the holy worshiped states, one nation under God, indivisible, just as in the Bible.
Councilman Ruckregal.
Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the regular joint town board and city council meeting held on July 14, 2020, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at the Consent Agenda. Twenty dash 194 is a request to approve a sole-source purchase of a report management system upgrade to the city's police record system and computer-aided dispatch upgrade to the city's emergency communication dispatch system from applications data systems in the total amount of $112,500 from previously approved funds. Twenty dash 195 is a request to approve an agreement for emergency notification services with unsolved in the amount of $30,000 per year. Twenty dash 196 is a request to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class CN net neighborhood commercial district for vehicle repair and service for the property located at 1610 Southwest Jefferson Avenue. And twenty dash 197 is the appointment by Mayor Artis to the Peoria-Pekin Urbanized Area Transportation Study Technical Committee with a request to concur of Assistant Public Works Director Andrea Koppenstein. That concludes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any items to remove from consent this evening? Seeing none, I have Councilman Montalongo.
Yes, item 2196. I'm sorry. My glasses on here real quick. Actually, I'm okay, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing none, we have a motion to approve consent. Councilmember Ali, seconded by Councilmember Ruckregal. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We have a first reading. Twenty dash 198 is a request for a first reading review of an ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to bodywork establishments.
Again, we have Corporation Counsel on the line, and we have Council Patel, who's here with us in person. Whoever would like to give the council a brief on this first reading?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, in 2018, the council took some update or completed some updates to what was previously a massage licensing ordinance and implemented an administrative scheme so that establishments that offered bodyworks and massage were required to become licensed with the city. The individual therapists are not required to be licensed with the city. They are fully licensed through the Illinois Department of Professional Regulation, but it does require the business to become licensed with the city. Our business license inspector has actively worked with the Center for Prevention of Abuse and routinely examines all the applications that come in. Over the past year, there was a request that came in from a business owner for the council to consider an exemption to the licensing requirement that would allow salons or spas or services that were offered under Barber Cosmetology, Aesthetic Hair Braiding, and Nail Technology Act to become exempt if they offered those within their facilities. I will tell you that after speaking with the business license inspector and the Center for Prevention of Abuse, this is not necessarily something that the legal department is recommending, but we are putting it out there for your consideration. I can tell you, our hesitation to recommend this is due, in fact, to... The Illinois Cosmetology Act does not contain any definition of the word "massage" or of the word "bodywork." So we have some concern that there is the potential for this exemption to be misused by some business owners. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions on first reading. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Corporation Counsel, for explaining that the legal department's not recommending this proposal and the rationale behind that. I know that...I was a big proponent of this ordinance when it was adopted in 2018, partly because it's a tool that we've been able to use to combat human trafficking, which is a big issue in central Illinois and in Peoria, which the Center for Prevention of Abuse has been working and successfully combating this problem. So my fear is if we adopt this change, we're going to really water down the ordinance that we have to combat human trafficking as well as these illicit establishments that was intended to close down. I'm wondering, I don't know if you, Corporation Counsel, or I think maybe the Director of Community Development, who I think's been in charge of enforcing this ordinance, can provide data on how successful we've been in being able to shut down these illicit establishments where some illegal activity was going on with the help of this ordinance?
Councilwoman, I would be happy to work with Ross Black and with the business license inspector and come back with some statistics on that for you.
One thing that was brought to my attention from the Center for Prevention of Abuse, they believe, if you just look at the advertising, that the change in advertising for illicit massage facilities has dropped from 20 to seven. So if you guys could look at that and confirm if that's true. I'm also wondering, you know, this exception... Let's see if I have the right thing in front of me. It looks like I don't, but when I read the ordinance, I'm wondering, when you come back, if you can let us know, since it's going to exempt those establishments that have a license under the state for salons, if the city's had any problems, whether it's through the police or community development with establishments having prostitution or human trafficking with establishments that do have state licenses for salons. Because if that's the case, then all of those establishments would be exempt under this proposed ordinance.
We will be happy to see if that's data we can pull.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions, but I appreciate your work on all of this, as I know the Center for Prevention of Abuse does as well. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on this first reading? If not, we would accept a motion to receive and file. Councilman Euler, seconded. Councilman Ruckregal. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at Regular Business. Twenty dash 199 is a request to reinstate the capital budget for fiscal year 2020 for the Sheridan Road Reconstruction Project in the amount of $4 million.
Councilmember Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I think our Director of Public Works would like to lay some salient facts out there for us to consider before I make a motion to approve.
Okay, I believe Director Powers is in the staff room. Director Powers, are you with us?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Thank you.
I believe we have a PowerPoint presentation along with this. It's just a couple of slides that should shed some light on this.
Okay.
Basically, the introduction slide is the Sheridan Road Reconstruction Project.
Director, we're having just a little bit of volume issue here, so maybe you could just speak up a little bit for us. Thank you.
All right, is that better?
Sure.
All right, page two, please. So this basically brings us to where we are in the milestones that we have gone past, actually the milepost. This project was a part of the original CIP. It was removed as a result of what we've gone through to date in the budget efforts to reduce the spending on the CIP. This project dates back to 2016, and this would be the culmination of the work that we planned on about 50% of this quarter. You see, those milestones are the approval of the budget in February. Then we had the setbacks relative to the budget in March. The original start date for this, with the awarded contract, would have been April of this year. We went past that date. Then we actually cut this project from the budget and then were approached earlier this month by what we see as an opportunity to execute this project that was moved to 2021 in this year with a contractor, putting the people to work, us closing the site completely, and effectually getting this project done this year by winter, in December. Which brings us basically to the conversations we've had to date and this vote tonight, which is before you, about halfway across, you see in the milestones. If this is approved, we would be notifying residents as early as tomorrow and staging equipment, or the contractor would be staging equipment between now and the end of this week and beginning work next week, and again, effectuating the project throughout the rest of this year and hopefully completing by December. Next slide, please. So this is the overview of the project itself. It is Sheridan Road from West Eleanor Place to West Richmond Avenue. It's a highly-traveled road, about 6,000 on ADT per day. And again, we'll be doing new roadway, sidewalk, stormwater sewers, bike lanes, and lighting. Next slide, please. Here you see one of our new signs, where we are trying to link our infrastructure to economic development, because as I said, since I've been here, I believe infrastructure and economic development are hand and glove anyway, and not one and the same, because they breed the same. And this will do the same thing in that regard. So you will see this sign, actually, on this project on either end. So our current state is, we are looking to reinstate that budget amount that was swept from earlier this year back into the project for Phase III engineering, which would be the balance of $526,625. That would be our immediate need. With an agreement to pay the contractor the balance for the project in January of next year, or the work that was done this year. Next slide, please. There will be an impact because of the full closure, which means we will be notifying the residents in that area as early as tomorrow as to how we will be going about the full closure. The benefits to a full closure are first, safety, because we can bring everybody in to do all the work that we are planning to do and anything that we may encounter that we don't know is there. So the utilities, the contractor, any other of the work that needs to be done will be done in a closed construction environment. But it also will require detours and things along those lines, which we have worked around and have a plan for. And you see there, we'll be routing down Columbia Terrace, McClure Avenue, and University Street, again, through December. And if everything goes well, knock on wood, hopefully even earlier. With that, if there are any questions, what we see as a benefit... I'm sorry, I wanted to kind of say is, we also wanted to make clear that we know that the CIP... It's easy to, I guess, sometimes put money out in front and as we remove these things, but the effect on the economy and this contractor working and putting people to work, we see as a benefit to this as well. So, and which is really the CIP in a nutshell, is our ability to move those dollars through and improve our infrastructure, but it's jobs outside of the city that are affected as well. And coming forward to do this, we see as a positive benefit. Now we'll stand by for any questions.
Okay, questions for Director Powers? Councilman Grab?
Director Powers, where are we with our minority targets for work on this project?
E.S.C., the...What we have is... With me, I have it in the communication. 23.48% for the hours on minority workers, 3.69% for all the hours of female workers, and the city workforce goals are 18% and 3% of female. And there was good faith efforts made. The documentation was submitted to the Chief Diversity Officer, and he has signed off for approval. And they're going to use...I'm sorry, they're going to utilize 10.12% of the value of the base bid for minority and business enterprises for electrical supply, material testing, construction layout, and trucking. And, I'm sorry, and there's an additional 7.38% for value of the base bid for women business enterprises.
Our Director of Public Works has such a soft spoken voice, but I think most of my colleagues, whom I have spoken to today, heard it. And I'm proud of the minority participation in this project. And I wanted to be absolutely sure that none of my district colleagues thought we were trying to put this project ahead of any of their projects. I know each district councilperson works very hard to get infrastructure projects done. And I don't think the public is generally aware of how long it takes to get some of these projects through the queue or how much time it sometimes takes. I remember the first colloquium we had to discuss this was at the Peoria High School Library back in 2016. So when we occasionally hear our constituents saying, "This project has taken forever to do," believe me, the district council people will agree with me, it has taken what seems like six lifetimes. But thankfully, we're here now for a project in the heart of our city. And I appreciate all my fellow council members taking my calls today to explain this. And Mayor, I appreciate work you did on it as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Ali.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. I didn't quite hear all those numbers, and so I'm going to ask, I think it's worth repeating, I'm going to ask Director Powers if you would repeat the minority targets associated with the project, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
There we go. Okay, so good faith efforts documentation was submitted by ICCI and reviewed and approved by the city's Chief Diversity Inclusion Officer. They'll include 10.12% of the value for the base bid for minority business enterprise toward electrical supply, material testing, construction layout, and trucking. Furthermore, the contractor proposes use of 7.38% of the value of the base bid for women business enterprises toward pavement striping, traffic control, landscaping, and paper installation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director, if I heard those numbers correctly, because you are so soft-spoken. You indicated 10.2 and then 7.3. Was that correct?
0.38, 10.12.
10.12 and 7.38? And so that looks like 17.6% or thereabouts?
Yes.
Okay. Isn't our minimum that the city tries to achieve 18%?
Yes.
And so it might sound like I'm splitting hairs on a half a percentage, but when you feel like you're a part of a neglected and disadvantaged community, that half a percent can add up to a few dollars. And so if you could go back to the contractor and see if we can't squeeze at least another half a percent out of there in the minority participation, I would greatly appreciate that. I'd like to thank the director for providing me with the information. And perhaps I'll just ask it in this way. Director, can you tell me if the Western Avenue Reconstruction was on the agenda to be completed before Sheridan or after Sheridan?
After. Sheridan Road is actually the only real shovel-ready project that we had on the CIP. All of the other projects that we had on the CIP are in a design phase and would have been in future lettings, anyway. This project had already been awarded.
Okay. So when you said this project has been awarded, what that says to me is that there was already a contractor on the project, that, in fact, this is either Phase II or Phase III of the Sheridan Reconstruction. And so when you say shovel-ready, it was... All we needed to do was provide the funding, and it was ready to go. Is that right?
Correct, Counsel. It was supposed to be executed in April of this year.
Okay. So is there a contractor already selected for the Western Avenue Reconstruction?
There is not.
So we are at the early stages of going to... If I recall correctly, when this project was revived, there was some indication that instead of... Because this project's moving along, that instead of January letting, bidding, that the Western Avenue project could go into the November letting or bidding. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so if the council approves this project, it will pull forward to go to letting the Western Avenue project, which was behind the Sheridan project, anyway. And I'd like to thank my council colleague in explaining that these major road projects are different in that, as frustrating as it is for us, district council members... as frustrating as it is for us district council members to want to get done right away, sometimes it can't happen that way. I explained to someone recently that the difference between this and doing your driveway is several million dollars and all kind of bureaucratic red tape. And so that's oftentimes, in addition to funding, waiting for the state or federal government to provide the funding is what usually takes so long. What takes even longer when it's not even on the list. And I was the one that put Western Avenue on the list in the first place. And so that was something that myself and others in the community recognized was a need. So I will be supporting this as a result of all that was mentioned. And lastly, I'd like to say that there are at least three African-American truckers who are waiting for this thing to be approved, because if they come to my office one more time, they're going to have to start paying rent. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Powers, well, first of all, Councilman Grab, Sheridan is looking really nice. I was really impressed with it. I drove down it one more time here just to take a look at it before our vote on this here tonight. And this small section does need to be completed to make it a complete street. But it, day-night difference from where it used to be, so nice job with that. Director Powers, as well as a district councilman, am concerned about when Glen Avenue is going to be done as well. Would you happen to have the traffic counts between, for Glen Avenue with you?
Hear me? I do not, Counselor.
Okay, so I know we've been discussing Glen Avenue for quite a while now, and certainly the people from Fort District, and especially anybody who uses Glen Avenue knows it's definitely needed for repair here, real soon here, the reconstruct project, something that we've been discussing quite a while and meeting with the neighborhood associations for probably the past couple of years. And I guess, just for the record, Glen Avenue is going to begin next year. Is that correct?
Correct. Where it will go would be summer, probably June letting.
Very good. And that's been my discussion as well with the city manager, that Glen Avenue reconstruction will begin next year as well.
With the amendments that we've discussed, Counselor.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that note.
Thank you. I'm seeing no other lights for comments, but I did want to mention, I think it's good news for all of us, that this morning and this afternoon, Councilman Grab and I, along with Director Powers, had some discussions with the contractor in addition to discussion points that Councilmember Moore brought up in terms of the workforce goals, making sure that those were prioritized, which they're trying to continue to do that. Consistent with a move that we made a couple of weeks ago on a contract that we asked the city manager to go back and request any potential reduction in the price. We talked to ICC about, you know, if there was anything they could do about sharpening their pencil a little bit on this. They did commit, and we're all aware of it, Director Powers as well, that the contractor did commit to a 3% reduction achieved through value engineering. But that will be part of the motion that we make tonight, is that that will include a 3% reduction in the pricing. So we'd like to thank them. They already are doing a lot to help us get this project done and offset a part of the expense until next year, when hopefully the cash flow is in a better situation. But we do thank them for making the very outward move to help us cut additional funding off of that. So I'd like to thank ICCI for their willingness to help us out on that one. So with that, I'm not seeing any more lights. Are there any other questions on this for staff or council? Okay. Councilman Grab?
To approve with that 3% reduction utilizing value engineering.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Moore. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
20-200 is a request to approve the funding recommendations from the CDBG Public Services Advisory Commission for the COVID-19 Community Development Block Grant, public services funding, in the amount of $200,000.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
I'd like to move for approval, would comment on the other side.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Regal. Councilmember Moore?
I'd like to thank the CDBG Public Service Advisory Commission for going the extra effort in reviewing the grant applications that came in for these dollars. I don't know if everyone has an appreciation for how much time it takes to go through all of the grant applications that come in. And when you have volunteers like we have on this commission, they are very dedicated, and they look at every single thing and every single list and compare and contrast. And I'd just like to thank them for all the work that they do, because we don't have enough staff to do this for ourselves. And they went through, to remind you what this is, this was additional funding that came in as a result of COVID-19. And it was an opportunity for organizations in the community to provide additional assistance. And if you're looking at your list, we had some submissions from organizations who had not submitted in the past. I was very glad to see Mount Zion Baptist Church on here, providing public service assistance, and ME Tech to provide workforce development. I don't, if I recall from the meeting, those two had not been on the list before, and so that was a great outreach to a community that is really in need of these funds. So with that, I'd like to move for approval. And I would like to ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question about this. So I think it would be directed to Director Black. I did notice there is, one of the organizations listed that we're proposing to fund is Mount Zion Baptist Church. So I'm wondering whether we've ever provided funding to a religious institution before, and specifically whether we've ever provided CDBG funding to a religious institute, because I would think that that's prohibited under the federal government requirements.
Director Black?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, we have provided funds, federal funds, CDBG and ESG funds to religious organizations in the past. There's no direct prohibition on providing government funds to religious organizations as long as the service that they are providing does not have a religious test in that the people who use the service don't have to attend a service or they don't have to convert to a particular religion. So there can't be a religious test. And we also make sure that any prominent religious materials are removed from the area where the service is provided.
Thank you. As a follow-up, do you know specifically what the program is for Mount Zion Baptist Church? It just says "public service assistance." So I'm just wondering what that means, if you know.
Councilwoman, I can send you, I can bring a report back on that particular outreach that they would be providing.
Okay, unless, I think Councilmember Moore might, no.
At the meeting, the advisory commission meeting, that's for the food bank. That is totally for the food bank. They've had an increased number of individuals coming to the food bank, and so all of these funds are strictly for the food bank.
Thank you. Councilwoman Moore's motion.
We have a second previously by Councilman Regal, but we'll put you right with him. So you got strong support on that second, Councilman. Any other discussion on this item? I'm seeing no lights. We have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
20-201 is a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency.
Councilman Regenbach?
Move for the approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Ali. Discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes with nine ayes, one nay. Councilmember Montalongo, Madam Clerk?
We're at unfinished business. 20-182 is a request to defer until August 11, 2020, the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code relating to short-term rentals.
Motion by Councilman Regenbach to defer, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Discussion on the deferral? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
20-125 is a request to receive and file the recommended 2020 to 2021 budget restructuring as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Assistant Manager Rattler?
I'm sorry. The point where we are open to feedback from council?
Okay. Similar to two weeks ago, we don't have additional information to present on the budget. There is, we are waiting on discussion, coming back on some of the fire-related issues, as well as kind of crossing our fingers that some type of relief is going to come out of Washington DC in the next couple of days, which, who knows what's going to happen. But to anybody out there that would like to encourage our Congress folks and our US senators to get some relief back to the cities, we haven't got one penny yet, not a penny. And so we really do need their help in this situation. I have Councilman Kelly first, and then Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to point out to the assistant city manager that all of these tables that we are given week after week after week have within them tax increase, a real estate tax increase. I think it is a reasonable guess that such an eventuality may not pass this council. Certainly wouldn't, I certainly would not vote for same. And so rather than getting the manager and yourself and others in a bind when we come down to the last moment, and now we have to vote on this, and we've never discussed, a tax increase, I don't want to be put in that position, and I don't want you to be put in that position. Other things, there's a lot of give and take. There are a lot of difficult decisions you have to make. I think we all understand that. But I think it is prudent to give us a pro forma on what happens without a tax increase. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, for the assistant city manager, and maybe to just let the city manager know, there are some things in the memo that we have since adopted that aren't included in it. Like the ERA, the early retirement incentive isn't included. And then it says that we're looking at a total debt service package of 30 million. But I believe a more recent communication from the city manager was that that had been narrowed to 15 million. So if we could just, for the next meeting, make sure this is up to date. And then one follow-up question I have is whether the, I guess, the amount that Patrick was predicting we'd be in deficit, I think, has changed based on some of the increased revenue that we've had for sales tax, and also, I know, the real estate tax, I think, has increased. And if we could get a report back on how it, what's coming in for the real estate transfer tax and compare it to recent prior years, that would be helpful. Thank you.
All indications that we've received in discussions with Congresswoman Bustos, Congressman LaHood, and Senator Durbin's office is that there may be a vote yet this week on this new bill. And at the latest, it would be the first week in August, and that will impact a lot of the information that comes back to us in terms of the next steps, in addition to some of the fire discussions, and other things that are happening. So I would, my guess is that at the August 11th meeting, we're going to have some pretty hard numbers in front of us and what we're going to need to do.
Follow-up question, which is whether, you know, I know it says in here and what was reported to us, that some of the layoffs, the reductions, the phasing would start July 1st. So I'm wondering whether or not that has happened.
We have not yet started layoffs. I believe the earliest date that we're currently considering is September 1st.
Okay, so just as long as we're just kept in the loop or updated on that, I'd appreciate it.
I'm struggling to hear you.
Oh, sorry. Just as long as we can get an update on that, too?
Yes.
Before the next meeting?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we receive and file with the recommendations from Council Jensen about updating the sheet when it comes back.
Seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
20-141 is the request to approve a voluntary separation incentive for sworn full-time and fire employees.
Councilmember Moore?
I'd like to move for approval.
Councilmember, I think we, even though this was a continuation on and approved, that we were waiting to see how the discussion with fire went before we brought the VSI back.
That's right. And at least they know that we're trying to get them out of here if they want to get out of here, but you're right. We are waiting for the revised numbers to determine how many of those that would be available. To answer our earlier question from someone, August 31st, if I'm not mistaken, is the date for both programs to, for folks to indicate their willingness to retire either the ERi or VSI. So with that, we'd like to defer this to the next meeting.
Okay, defer to the next meeting, seconded by Councilman Regenbach. Discussion on the deferral? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
If there's no further unfinished business?
Do we have any unfinished business tonight, unfinished? Okay.
Then we would be at new business.
New business to come for the council tonight, new business. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I have a request to see if maybe we could have Monica Henderson come to our next meeting. I know, especially with the news of the increase of cases in the last two weeks, I just, you know, get a lot of questions from constituents, and I do pay attention to, you know, her daily press conference. But I think it would be helpful if she could come and give a presentation and maybe answer some of our questions. One thing that I keep getting calls and emails about is, and it's even happened to myself and my son, is the turnaround for testing. We were tested at the Civic Center testing site in June, and my son didn't get his results until 12 days after the test, and I never got any results. And I know that's a common thing. I'm hearing that from different people all over the city. So just if she could give us some... So just if she could give us some, you know, feedback on why that's happening, if they're working on trying to improve that, and other things, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Moore next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That would be interesting to have her, Ms. Henderson, come in, Hendrickson, because I believe the Health Department is not running the facility downtown, the Civic Center. And so, she may have some insight, because from what I understand as of yesterday, that the Health Department has a two-to-three day turnaround. So, stay local. In any event, I wanted to ask Director Powers, if he's still there. I've received a number of complaints from, after this last heavy rainfall, that there are certain areas of the South Side that are without proper sewer systems or gutters, the inlets on the street, let's say, that would allow the water to move off the street and away from the homes. Have you received a number of calls in your office? And what is the plan for helping those folks to address the flooding that is in their basement? What is happening for the council, after that last rain we had, I received a number of calls from folks who are living between MacArthur and Western, Martin Luther King and Jefferson. And there are some areas there that have received just a ton of water. I'm remembering one resident who indicated that she had water coming up back through her sewer system into the basement, and it was just flooding out into the basement. So Director Powers, how are we addressing those?
Can you hear me? There we go. We can hear you.
So broadly, we're addressing it, and we have been inundated with calls just overall. This has, I think, been classified as a fifty-year storm. In some areas of the city, we saw close to nine inches of rain in a very concentrated way. So yes, we did see some major surcharges within the system that went across the spectrum of stormwater into sanitary. As far as what we can do relative to improving it, again, we do have the stormwater utility. We are looking at those areas that are relative to that in the CSO. And then we're getting it overwhelmed the sanitary side. What we're doing system-wide is looking for system improvements and what we can do with the dollars that we have available to us for projects and moving forward. For individual homeowners, there are assistance programs on both sides of this, on the storm side and on the sanitary side, where they could put backflow preventers in. And the city could offer, I believe, up to seventy-five percent reimbursement, up to twelve hundred dollars, for a homeowner to take that preventative action. As far as remediation for damage and those types of things, sewer laterals and the protection of a home from the home to the street or the connection to the sewer is a homeowner responsibility. But we do have those assistance programs to help them going forward.
Would it be possible, using our Channel twenty-two communication system that we have now, that we would put together something and maybe a one-page slide that refers to the information you provided? Where can homeowners go? Who can they call? Is there a phone number? Is it GP, the Greater Peoria Sanitary District? Is it the City of Peoria? What are those phone numbers? Who do they talk to? It's great to talk about the CSO, but CSO is so far down the road. A lot of these folks need help right away. And at least if they felt like they could contact somebody, that the information was readily available, it wouldn't make the damage go away, but it would make them at least see that we are concerned about their health and safety. Because many of the folks who contacted me started, you know, they were relating some of this to perhaps a COVID spread. Whether that's true or not, I think what they are trying to convey is the urgency of this work that needs to be done. So is that possible? I know Stacy is probably around listening somewhere. If you could get with Stacy and provide on our Channel twenty-two some one-page slide, also provide that information on our website and our Facebook pages, so that it's readily accessible.
We are already working on that, Councilor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had Councilman Euler next.
Cancel.
Okay. Councilmember Montalongo next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to let the community know, our fourth district residents know at least, I will have a Zoom meeting with the neighborhoods and residents. I'm still scheduling for Thursday, the first Thursday of the month, at seven thirty. It's going to be something different. We haven't tried doing that, having a Zoom meeting, but we're going to give it a shot. And I tried having the meeting, first meeting, or the first Thursday in July, had two people show up. So I think, yeah, people are a little bit wary about COVID, and rightfully so. So we're going to try and connect through a Zoom meeting. I'll be getting that information out, probably through our Neighborhood Association Presidents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. There was something else that I remembered. When I was talking about the CDBG Public Service Advisory Commission, I know that there's been a lot of work done with the small businesses. If you recall, there's also an initiative with the small businesses. And that's going to come before us. I will tell you, I've heard from a number of individuals who have not been satisfied with the process, this once-in-a-lifetime, never-done-it-before kind of process. And in talking with the Grants Department, Catherine Murphy and Cassie and Amy over there, I have to give them, acknowledge that they are doing a yeoman's job trying to get this done. We tried to pull this information together, the application process, the requirements, working with CDBG governmental regulations, which is not the easiest thing to do. If you've ever worked with governmental regulations, and you know what I'm talking about, sometimes they've communicated in exquisitely, other times not so much. They acknowledge that, and they're efforting to try to correct those things. And so, it's not very easy for me to say we're doing as best we can, because I'm always thinking we could do better, and we can. I would just like to ask Director Black at our next meeting, excuse me, if at our next meeting, he can give us a report on the number of applications that were received for all of the grants that were submitted, a report on what the dollars that were available, the dollars that have been committed, what will happen with any dollars that are left over? If there's going to be a second round? What lessons we've learned? If there's not going to be a second round? If those funds can be pulled back to where they were swept from? If you recall, we had some CDBG funds in, already sitting there waiting to be used. But because of this national emergency, they were swept out into this program. And if I can put a plug in, alley lighting is a big deal. And more money in code enforcement to do alley sweeps, that would be wonderful as well. So Director Black, if you're there and listening, I know you are, if you could put that on the agenda to bring that back next time, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I had Councilman Kelly next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask the forbearance of the council. But we've got a very short meeting, so I hope I'll be forgiven. But I'd like to go back to part of the consent agenda, item twenty-one ninety-five, and just congratulate our City Manager and Assistant City Manager and others who were involved with, this is a rather small contract that we were talking about. But they negotiated a twenty, better than a twenty-five percent decrease on that contract for two years. It's not going to make a huge difference in the budget, but that kind of work, even on small stuff, I think makes a difference. And I would just like to congratulate them on that. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business this evening? I do have one item that I would like to bring to everyone's attention. This is a book that was dropped off in my office by Superintendent Demilon Karat. Everybody is discussing school and what's going to happen with school. Well, last week, this session of school for Valeska Hinton started. And they're in school and doing very well. In addition to that, Ms. Anna Brown, who has been a teacher at Valeska Hinton for, we'll just say, a long, long time. As a matter of fact, when my youngest, who is twenty-nine years old, went to preschool, he went to Valeska Hinton, and Ms. Anna Brown was his teacher back then. She was a prodigy. I think she was only like eight or ten years old herself. But anyway, this book was put together and published by Ms. Brown and her students in Green One. It's called The Green One Experience. And I know that Councilmember Moore is going to be the first one that wants to see this. But the other council members may be interested, too, because this is a pictorial. And you'll see a whole lot of pictures here of the work on the MacArthur Bridge that was done over a long period of time. And it was a great opportunity for Ms. Brown and her students to capture the pictures and talk about the movement on the project and how it proceeded from the beginning to the end. And to Ms. Brown, this is really a very, very good book. It's all pictures, so it was easy for me to understand. And a lot of work went into it, though. And I know that Superintendent Demilon Karat is very proud of all of her teachers. But she asked that we give special recognition to Ms. Anna Brown and her class in Green One. And so, anybody that would like to take a look at this, you're more than welcome to. Madam Clerk.
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
We have several this evening. The only two rules are, we need your name for the record, just your name. And we have a five-minute speaking limit, and the timer is on the desk. Up first, we have Drew Hubbard.
I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak to council. My name is Drew Hubbard, as mentioned. I've been a Peoria resident my entire life, and I'm speaking to you today from a place of complete love. I love my city, and because I love my city, I want and I feel like I need to see better for my city. Our city is rated as one of the worst cities for black people in America to live in. This is old news, I know. This is a ranking coming from the outside. I understand that as well. But I'm having trouble arguing with that ranking as a young black woman who's lived in Peoria her entire life. The black Peorian unemployment rate is almost double what it is for white Peorians, which is thirty-two point six percent of African-Americans who live in Peoria. That percentage more than doubles for citizens, for white citizens, at seventy-six point one percent. And that's for people who actually own their home. When we look at it, we can see that only nine point three percent of the white community falls below the poverty line, whereas thirty-four point five percent of the black community falls below the poverty line. When we look at the unemployment rate, a similar discrepancy can be seen. The unemployment rate for black people living in Peoria is significantly higher at eighteen point one percent. Again, it's more than double the unemployment rate for white residents in Peoria, which is five point five percent. Even when we move into the office, or the school, or retail stores, or any other place employment, we do not see equity. We feel like that's an issue that needs to be addressed. The median household income for white residents also sits significantly higher than the median household income for black residents. For white residents, it's around sixty thousand dollars, whereas for African-American residents, it's around forty-one thousand dollars. But at least the number isn't cut in half. For people who look like me, who look like my friends in this room, and people who even look like those who sit on council, we are overpoliced and we are incarcerated. There are approximately half as many black people in the city as there are white people. Yet our arrest numbers do not mirror this. When you take a second to actually look at the traffic stop numbers, according to an article in the Journal Star from two thousand sixteen, which is a bit dated but still relevant, fifty-two point five percent of the total over forty-five hundred traffic stops were made on minority drivers. That is over half of the traffic stops. An alarming statistic, when at the time, our city's population was only twenty-six point nine percent African-American, four point six percent Asian, and four point nine percent Hispanic, a total of thirty-six point four percent of the population, which is far below the percentage of traffic stops that we make up. And we think that it's very important that we look at these statistics and analyze them, because Peoria could be a great city. However, we're currently facing a huge problem with inequalities, and we feel like a lack of accountability for really driving change in our city. And once again, as somebody who was a recent college grad and is back home as a result of the pandemic, I feel like it's time that a change happens, because there are a lot of young black people growing up in Peoria who deserve to be a part of a different future. Thank you for allowing me to address council today.
Thank you. Up next, we have Carter Bell.
Hello, I'm Carter Bell, and I'm going to continue the Drew statement. So these issues go even deeper than they easily observable. Let's talk about education, an area many citizens have voiced concern before, myself included. Ninety-two point six percent of white adults in Peoria have a high school diploma. Not quite perfect, but incredibly close. This dwarfs the seventy-nine point six percent of black adults who have attained the same degree. And again, when we move to a related category, a bachelor's degree, for example, we do not see equity. Only thirteen point four percent of black residents have a bachelor's degree, twenty-six point seven three percentage points below the thirty-nine point eight seven percent of white citizens who have attained this distinction. These are merely two categories of statistics that point to a much deeper issue within our society's education system. Believe me, I could go on. I could talk about educational inequality and how the opportunities presented to kids at Truen and Roosevelt are not the same ones that are presented to the children at Keller. How my own educational path did not mirror my equality as intelligent black, as equally, did not mirror me equally as intelligent black peers, and why that is. I could speak on many more things, even outside of education. I could talk about food deserts and the distance people in South Peoria, a heavily black area, have to drive to reach a grocery store. I could talk about the arduous, difficult, and incredibly murky process of getting loans in the city, an issue that heavily affects black entrepreneurs. I could talk till I was blue in the face, but our time here is limited. There is nowhere near enough time to speak on everything that deserves speaking on. So now, I will move into questions. Thanks to me very little without the accompanying questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next, we have Dylan Morris.
My name is Dylan Morris. I've also been a Peoria resident for my entire life. Just going to continue on the comments made by two of my friends. So to go into the questions, I'd like to open with kind of the biggest question in this room, which is how has this city held itself accountable? How has Peoria attempted to change the recurrent stigma of being one of the worst cities for African-Americans in America? I imagine the answer to this would be the hiring of Dr. Fares Mohammed as Chief Diversity and Inclusion Officer in twenty eighteen. A huge hiring and a promising step, no doubt. Yet he's the only person working in his office. Looking at cities of comparable size, some of them even being near us, i.e. Champaign and Springfield, we see entire departments being devoted to diversity and inclusion. Departments with average staff sizes of four to five employees. We hired one. What kind of commitment to social equity does this show? Our questions do not stop here. There are numerous possible avenues for accountability. Many of these involve a dialogue between this council and the citizens you serve. Outside the narrow avenues of running for office and/or speaking at council meetings, how can community members have a voice? Is there some form of follow-up system in place for those of us who are able to air our grievances at these meetings? What are council members doing to directly connect with members of their districts outside of election years? Because how can the needs of citizens be addressed if the community is not involved directly in the change? We want and need answers to these questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next, we have Unique Worthy.
My name is Unique Worthy, and I'll continue speaking on what my peers spoke of before me. We realize that the mayor has been holding meetings me. We realize that the mayor has been holding meetings with black leaders, though they are predominantly religious leaders. And while they do hold great positions in our community, they do not speak for all of us. These meetings are also happening with an informal racial justice and equity coalition. But what we want to know is, what's happening outside the meetings? Where's the movement? Where's the talk of the movement? Where's the plan? Where's the action? What resolutions have happened because of these? Where are the tangible results? The only thing that we've seen so far is that in the near future, you may begin to put together an actual coalition based off the meetings you've been having thus far. Let's also talk about our budget, because you can't hold a city accountable without talking about where the money's at. The 2019 budget does actually acknowledge that this council and our government has an issue with speaking to our citizens with transparency and knowing what we want and what we need the money to go to. However, I haven't seen any results of it thus far. It mentions performance management reviews. Where are they? It mentions holding different departments accountable. How have you done that? What changes have been put into place? What policies have been put into place to get us further to these goals? What policies or changes have been put in place to the budget after the performance management reviews? Where are the performance management reviews? Why can't I see them? Where's the money and why is that not readily available for me to look at? Why is the information that you are using to decide how our city will run not readily available for me or any citizen who looks like me? Peoria can be better. We have the potential to be a bellwether city. We can make national trends. We can make big strides here with the community, with the education, with you, with us. But it starts with a commitment to change, not just acknowledging the change, but working on the change. The work is going to be hard. The acknowledgement will hurt an ego. But you didn't sign up to sit up here and be easy. You signed up for a hard job and all of you knew that when you took it. And if that's not something that you can do, then I suggest you continue to ask yourself why you sit in the seat that you have. Or maybe ask yourself why you sat in the seat in the first place. Perhaps it's time to step down. This city can be so much better than what it's at. And I honestly believe that you could get us there if you commit yourselves to doing the work to do so. But we will hold you accountable if you choose not to. And your time to vote is coming up. And if the move has to be to get you out, then that's what the move will be. But what we generally hope for is that you'll take what we've said here today and meet with us. Tell us where the results are. Show us the reviews. Give us a plan. Meet your community where it's at. Do your jobs. We do appreciate you letting us speak here today and we hope you've heard what we had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Paula Hinton.
My name is Paula Hinton and I own Five Senses Spa, Salon, and Barber Shop. And I am here to talk about the ordinance for the Body Works. I did want to just review a couple of things that I personally had worked on since I had received the packet of information. I had made everybody aware that the ordinance had specifically said that this was not to impact legitimate businesses. However, legitimate businesses did receive this ordinance. So I did my due diligence and I will not present a problem without a solution. And I did have the opportunity to sit down with two different city attorneys, as well as the mayor and the city manager. I did present two pages on how to be able to define legitimate businesses. And with that information, the mayor had said that they would look into the ordinance. After that, I had not heard anything back, so I had reached out again, and this was in October, at which this meeting, who was present, was the city attorney, as well as the Center of Prevention of Abuse. I did have the opportunity to be able to point out some things that were of concern and how the Asian Body Works should not apply to legitimate businesses. It's actually quite offensive for massage therapists to be categorized as such. Asian Body Works does not require any licensing, where everybody in our profession that is professional does have to go through 1,500 credit hours, as well as being able to take a state board and to have a license. So these Asian Body Works individuals are not licensed in the state of Illinois at all. After meeting, I was told that there was not enough information to be able to exempt my legitimate business. And I was referred to be able to look into legal opportunities, which I did. I did contact an attorney in Chicago for the state, as well as two attorneys in Washington DC that works with our Professional Beauty Association, of which we went ahead and we took a look at the ordinance as to how we can go ahead and take a look at it. There was a recommendation that was given to be able to look at the definition of what the ordinance shows. And instead of reading that out loud, that is information that I provided to Chrissy and to many people. And basically, the conclusion was to have an eighth provision that would exclude cosmetology, aesthetics, hair braiding, nail technology, salons, and barber shops registered with the state of Illinois, provided that the salon and shop can provide valid proof of the certificate of registration from the Illinois Department of Federal Professional Regulation to which massages are performed. And that is my business and I am here to represent all the legitimate businesses and to be able to be disconnected with this Asian Body Work realm that is unfortunately including people that don't belong in there. So instead of punishing the people that are doing things correctly, there are other ways to be able to identify what the trafficking is supposed to be identifying. And there are different ways versus taxing and creating more work for us business owners that are trying to provide a living for employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do not have an executive session, so we would be at adjournment.
We would like to thank our city attorney, Mas Patel, for sitting in with us tonight. Thank you very much. We have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Kelly and seconded by Councilman Montalongo. There's no discussion. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank Joe Deacon and his listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel 22. This evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council is adjourned.